It is three o'clock if you want to get started.
It's July 10th and it's three o'clock and I called the City of Sweet Home Library Board Meeting Together. Members, this is a work session to talk about a future building. Have all of you had some time to look over some of this material?
Yes.
Okay, great. It looks like there are two major categories that I could that I could identify. The major one being location and of course, the the concept of price kind of overarches everything. So price is a concern, location is a concern. And I wanted to just highlight, at least for starters, the priorities related to location, which is the first category in the handout. But also the last page related to assumptions about a new building. So I would like to know if anybody has any comments for starters in either the priority of the location or and or assumptions about the new building. That would be a good place to start.
And I'll say what louder up here, what I'm looking for is direction of, yes, I there's, I have a huge, we have a huge wishlist. But we need to focus that down and get direction of where we need to go. We're looking for a new either plot of land or a new building to remodel. And then what exact, where exactly that would be in general, general, not need to say like, it's exactly this plot of land right now. Because I know more stuff may come up, but there may be a perfect spot right now. So I mostly am looking for direction. Where do we go from here?
Yeah, so that's, that's our challenge. Because if you've looked at the priority, the locations that are available at this time, there are pluses and minuses to each. And then for my my need for data, there's a lot of data missing and I'm not really sure how to go about getting that data that's not there.
And Adam can pull up any of the addresses we're talking about, so we know where it is on the map.
Okay.
That might help visually.
Yeah. So do, do any of you have any questions or comments about a particular piece of property that's listed in our handout?
Well, I would note that in the list of priorities, the word space appears 31 times.
That's all?
Which suggests we need more space than was considered necessary the last time. And so I would speak against smaller spots and in favor of larger ones. In my personal opinion.
So by spots, you mean acreage?
Yeah.
So more acreage?
Yeah.
At least to support the size building that we anticipate. Plus maybe more to expand at a future time.
Last time when, when the community built the library, it was a huge advancement, but did not permit expansion or growth. And that's why we're in the situation we're in now. And so I think we need to think a little bigger than the current needs. Just one thought.
So I would agree with that and also just say that we, in a sense, are de facto leaders of the community in terms of visioning for the library. And that doesn't mean that since we're saying we would like to have more than is necessary, that we're being extravagant. That is not the case. We are more interested in the functionality of space that gets built and its ability to adapt to the I don't want to use the word needs, I don't like that. But the probably to some extent requirements for the library to function well for the requirements that will be coming in the next 20 years. So I agree, Jim. Thank you.
Given, and I don't have exact numbers, they might be able to help us on those, but we've had an increased growth rate in our city that's kind of been more than we have previously, and I don't see that stopping necessarily in time soon. I personally, and I'm sorry, but I don't see anything downtown right now that would even come close to meeting our current needs. Never mind looking 10, 20 years ahead. I've been looking at a lot of things. My personal opinion is for us to look for land and to be able to build. The parking downtown is an issue, even with all of these, we may or may not be able to. I mean, I've seen the parking lot in the street full around our current library when we've moved things indoors from Sanki and stuff, so that's my two cents. I mean, do we know how much we've grown over the last five years?
In terms of the town?
Yeah, I mean, it's been, when I moved here, I mean, the street signs changed a couple of times of our
I do, I do know that we are now over 10,000 in population, which puts us into a different category in terms of the state and
what we need as far
compliance with other areas of municipal activities. So we definitely stepped up in that regard.
And geographically, if you look at the city, where we are now is the center
Right.
of physically of the center of Sweet Home, because it does go out to the point and starts at, you know, a little before Thriftway.
Right.
So there's that to consider as well. A lot of the new building is happening on this, the east end of town or the east half of town.
And that's because that's where billable land is.
Yeah.
So.
What, but what would that do to the priority of being near school?
Well, it wouldn't.
I'd say it would just be up to us to decide a bigger space, outdoor space being, and still accessible to community members.
Right.
Over being close to a school.
And on this, where we are right now, we are fairly closer to Hawthorne and Foster's. We're never going to be close to Holly. It's not within city limits, but there's, you know, there's schools tucked away.
And the bus, the bus still comes out this way.
Yeah, and the, but don't worry about the bus. They will follow us wherever we go.
Perfect.
So the other point I think about acreage is that it allows us to, at least for part of marketing and advertising, to say that there's lots of parking. This is not a town where people are necessarily going to be walking from one place to the other. They drive. And so knowing that there is going to be a place for them to park, I think, is important.
Well, and in one of these, in points that are laid out for priorities, it was, you know, having an outdoor space. So instead of having functions at Sanki Park, there was some outdoor space. And I think as far as the list of properties that I went through, only one of those was bigger land.
Which one was that?
Out on 47th.
The old airport.
Old airport.
Which is a, it's an awkward location. But there's a lot of housing there and a lot of, I would think, families and community members. And that is kind of close to.
You're still within, I think, about 10, 12 blocks of Hawthorne. And Foster is on 50 something across the road, but it's still fairly close.
And just as a point of detail, the old Coulter property, which is off on 42nd, the planning commission approved a development there.
And Duck Hollow also, I think, has
Duck Hollow, and there's also, anyway, over 100 houses are approved in the Coulter area, obviously to be built in phases. But that's still a quantity. And then there's another smaller development that started to be built, maybe that one, but there already are some houses that were built. But yeah, that one that you're circling, yeah, those two, those will all be single family homes.
The bottom one here too, where the farmhouse is by Hawthorne.
So this one is going to be the big Coulter addition. That one's going to be fairly large. This one is Naughty Pine and it is almost built out. There's a couple lots on this side. But the north side is almost completely built out already. And then down here, this is also being built right now. Most of the building permits that we have issued have been pretty much from 38th East. Not all, but I would say 85%.
And so looking at that, I also just want to comment that we're not disregarding all the population that lives in the avenues. Because that for so long has been the hub of Sweet Home and there's a sizable population there. So just to have that be clear.
I'd say when I was looking over properties, a big thought of my mind was getting onto Highway 20. Being visible where people are, because that's been a lot of comments is people just don't know where the library are, where their library is. That 47th piece of land doesn't solve that very well. So I feel like that's just a downside.
Although you could make the argument that 49th, now that it's access to the clinic.
Hmm, yeah.
Is 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 a decent street up to the east end of the old airport property. So and it's not that far off of Main Street, but I, Highway 20, but I understand what you're saying. And again, there are going to be pluses and minuses to any of these places. So do we prioritize visibility, potential access versus square foot and acreage? The question about the 47th Avenue or the old airport property is about the wetlands and how architecturally or landscape wise, a building could be placed suitably with parking so that the wetlands are not impinged on or whatever has to be done to to preserve them. So that to me is a potential minus because we don't know what's required to build around or near wetlands.
Is that a wetland? Lack of better word, preserve or reserve? I mean, is that protected right now?
So Oregon has very strict requirements when it comes to wetlands, but what I will say, and I only know this at a very high level. My understanding is there are some provisions that because it's a former airport, we may actually be able to get that reclassified. If not, there are enough provisions in state law that we could, for example, do reclamation to one side of the property and relocate if the wetlands were in an area where we wanted to do construction.
Well, there's also the possibility of co-locating with a park. There are several in Oregon where wetlands have been turned into parks. And I used to go to a spot in Gilbert, Arizona, where there was a large preserve, nature preserve with ponds and and then the library was right there and it was beautifully located together. And I think to, to get the land that you need to have a larger vision would require, I don't know, require, but it might be an advantage to share with a park or some kind of facility. And the wetlands in question here are not aesthetically ranked very high. There aren't many species occupying that space currently that are priority. In fact, as far as strategic need, the national inventory and the state inventory both grade that spot low as far as their interest in doing anything about it or with it.
So that reminds me, there's also a wetlands park in Corvallis that I went to once with a friend. It's in the northeast part of Corvallis. And it's lovely and it's got the elevated walkways, you know, that you, wooden elevated walkways and such. Of course, I don't remember the name and I couldn't give you the address, but I'm sure we could find it on the map. And also I don't know what jurisdiction that comes under in terms of the city of Corvallis, but it's in the city limits.
So the image that's on the screen right now is where the wetlands are on that property.
Yeah.
But as you can see, there's still a pretty large area of usable land.
And in Corvallis, it's the Jackson Fraser Wetland.
Okay.
And has two and a three quarter, oh, two thirds of a mile of paths on boardwalk through the area.
And it's county jurisdiction, it's a county park. Yeah.
But the airport property is just over 23 acres and that's definitely more than just what a library building needs. Even if we have a lot of extra space and parking.
Right.
And less than five acres are designated as wetlands.
Yeah. So I believe this property is also able to be split up. Because at one point they were selling it in like three different parcels. So that's also, you can also consider there's, you know, if we had library, a park, parking, there could also be, and wetlands, there could also be a portion that we could sell off as make some of the money back a little bit, because it's still going to be bare land. So that's a consideration as well for cost. But it would also cost more to build a building, build a park. And I don't know how much city infrastructure is within that area.
So we have quite a bit of infrastructure because there's housing north, south, east and west. So water and sewer is on both sides of that property.
Right.
And east and west.
Right.
So as far as infrastructure goes, I don't think that's going to be a holdup. And this area I'm circling is still a huge usable area.
Yeah, and I know there's fire hydrants and stuff already on within that property.
Yeah, I mean, I guess one other thing to consider is it is probably, I don't know this for sure, surrounded by R1 zoning. And I don't remember what this property is zoned as.
I believe wherever we go, we'll have to get a conditional use. So that's just because of what we are.
Well, yeah, but I'm just thinking that and certainly that opens it up to the neighbors being able to talk about whether they want a library of so many thousand square feet with cars coming in and out into what previously they considered to be a neighborhood. I know there are a lot of people who live out in that part of town who've lived there for a long time and consider it to be rural in a sense, and have voiced opinions about various development options that have been brought forward by other people. I don't necessarily want that to scare us away if that's what we want. But it's important to have good neighbors and to be welcome in a community. And so that's, that's a concern. I mean, I personally like the idea of having a bigger piece of property as well. It just gives us a little bit more flexibility in terms of location and building and ingress and egress to streets.
Yeah, just, just keep in mind, and obviously, part of this is once you identify a location and a vision, fundraising becomes easier. But just keep in mind with what, what's available, assuming we pay to asking, that would leave very, very little to do any actual site development versus if we acquire a building, we can initiate at least phase one construction immediately. So that's just something to consider when you're looking at sites.
And also thinking that potentially we could sell off part of this property, that's a little bit, that's a stretch for me, because I know this property's been for sale for a long time for their, whatever the reasons are. So, yeah, good point.
Do we have a grant writer either in, on the city staff or the library?
Not dedicated. We all just do what we can.
Everybody is, has good skills in grant writing.
And I'll also say I've been looking for the, almost four years I've been here, capital grants are almost impossible. If it's anything, if you're asking for anything over a million dollars, they're not there. There's loans. But that's just a small, a lower interest rate. And they're still only for usually a few million. So it would have to be a different type of funding. Once we have a building, if we, there's grants for remodeling, there's grants for all the furniture, the technology, making it energy efficient. But there's not really grants for building it. We did previously look at co-locating with something else like low income housing, senior housing. But the regulations for what grants they can get have also changed, at least last I heard, they could still have changed again. That it's easier for them to get grants when it's a separate building. It can be on the property with a government building or something else, educational building, which helps, but the grants themselves are for like multi-story, single properties, not shared.
So what do we know then about the 1744 Main Street, the McCool property? Because that looks like it has two buildings that are on the portion of that property that it's for sale. And I guess you can say you can't beat the location because it's right on Main Street, right next to Safeway.
And the, the size of the lot, I think, believe is just over an acre.
Yeah.
It's just the, the two front buildings and not their work building. I don't, I mean, the buildings as they are would not work, but I don't know if that would help with like the foundation that's already there and all of that.
Well, but if we're talking about there might be more money available for a building, could those two buildings be joined in some way? Again, I'm not an architect. I have no idea. I'm just talking off the top of my head. Could they be joined and something made of it that way?
That could be a possibility. It would depend on their construction, I believe.
Yeah.
But also I've seen, having been to like Seattle and such, where they literally just leave the brick walls and gut everything and then build high rises within those one story. I think most things are possible. It's just cost again. But I do love the location. I wish it was on the other side of the street. But there is a traffic light there that would help and a walkway that would help with getting people across the street more safe.
Right. And it being one and a third acres, there's enough space there for parking and for access to be configured in such a way that's easy to get in and out. Plus, just from a safety aspect, in and out is on to a one-way street. So you're not going to be having somebody make a left-hand turn out of that driveway. Which I think is a plus.
And it has landscaping.
There are some trees, yeah. So, and that is
And if any of these properties with buildings are something we want to look more into, we can do that as well.
And also that zoning is C2. So that's commercial just outside of the main core commercial district. And I don't know if that would require a conditional use.
So any of these properties, we would convert to public facility zoning, which allows for the library use.
PU, yeah, got it.
And again, anything is possible, but the big green building is a pole barn structure. And so connecting that to a traditional stick-built structure of a different level would have some extra challenges.
Yeah.
Meaning prides.
Well, in building codes, we're clearly, a pole barn's not designed to house people particularly, so.
Excuse me, can you bring up 1105 Main Street? I'm having trouble picturing that one. Oh, okay. That's why it's familiar. I just couldn't picture.
I believe, yeah.
And then
There's just three addresses there. Sorry, there's three, there's three addresses.
Okay, and it's all that same building? That would be
Yeah, if they tore down a wall in between, I don't know. I think they started to, okay.
I mean, that, is that, sorry. So is it the 8,000 plus the 9, 9,800 to combine then? If we, wow, that would be ideal on Main Street. I see they're not currently available. Is the possibility they may become available?
That's my understanding.
Awesome.
But they were just pulled off the market for a few months. I don't know for how long that'll be.
And then Megan and I did discuss the parking for this building. There is parking in the back, but it's really interesting. And to me, there
Adam might more, know more about which portions.
With that building in the middle, the parking
The, that building, I don't believe has any allocated parking. This structure right here owns, I believe, from about this crease line down to here. And then these are allocated to here.
Okay.
So they had some sort of an agreement with them for shared use of this. But it was actually just the Main Street that was actually allocated to the building. Unless something has changed with the new owners since they kind of own the whole strip there. They obviously aren't fighting themselves for parking and the building has been unoccupied for quite some time, so it has been a non-issue.
And we do still, this is still within a block of the parking lot we currently have.
Will that parking lots be able to be used for?
Unless the city Unless the city kicks us out.
Current, yeah, current parking lot, red dot.
Yeah, too far.
Where parking lot is too far for some people right now.
But it requires crossing two streets.
There's parking not ideal there. That's a big.
It's, I believe it's just at the minimum of the space we want. Um, and the parking is an issue, but location is awesome.
Right.
It's just, there's pluses and minuses to everything.
And if you don't have to go crazy on your parking, there's always the opportunity to work with neighboring business owners to get a shared access agreement.
And currently we are only open until six. So there are maybe some after-hours venues in the area that don't need day parking.
Do we know anything about the condition of the electrical and anything like that inside?
Uh, me visually looking at it, I would think everything needs to be replaced.
Okay.
Or upgraded at the minimum.
Yeah, I would.
So that'll, so that'd be a consideration, but workable?
It would be workable. And the walls and all that, any, any building in town, the walls would need to be reinforced. Cause that's one of the problems we have now. But it's still, the overall price should be in the three to five million dollar range to redo a building. As opposed to fifteen to twenty to build a building. And with remodeling, there are more grants available and you could piecemeal together some smaller ones for specific projects. It still would require a fund, a deal of fundraising, but it would be far more manageable.
Do we know what year that building was built in? We could find out.
I'm gonna say most things in this town were built in the sixties, late sixties, early seventies. Seems to be the architecture.
Which means that potentially the bones could be really good.
It's just, I don't know how the electrical is.
Well, yeah, I mean, I would assume that would all have to be redone. Interior walls redone, just strip it down to the bare bones and make sure that they're good.
And reinforced.
Yeah. And, and you know, buildings that old, you worry about water damage, what kind of um situation has the roof been in? Has it been? Updated, maintained, da, 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 da. Those are a lot of other details.
In my opinion, the best thing that could happen to that building would involve a bulldozer.
And then since Adam has the map there, um Old City Hall. If we want to be involved in that, we would need to know if we want to be involved in the discussion of what happens to that building. The lot size is fairly small.
Yeah, it is small.
The building would have to be basically the edge of the lot size.
And then to answer the previous question, the T and M building was built in nineteen forty-six.
A little mature.
That's almost as old as me.
According to the Lynn County property records, that was an original retail store built in nineteen forty-six.
Yeah, I recall now I, I read that as well at some point. So.
I just keep hearing it used to be a butcher shop before and grocery store before it was a pizza place.
Right.
I don't even know what it was before that.
Yeah, so the downside of the Old City Hall is even if it was torn down. Um, the approximate half of an acre. And then the parking lot across the street is like minimally adequate. And the off-street parking is.
Better than.
Spars. I will say one other thing about the um Old City Hall. Is the um safe house across the street. I'm not sure from, from what I know. What's been said in a planning commission meeting, and I can say this because it was for the public. They were concerned about um. The city hall being used for other commercial purposes. Just because people are coming in and out of there at whatever times when that business is open. And they have a vulnerable population who comes to their location at any hour. And so again, looking at the neighborhood and wanting to be. Um, considerate of neighbors, I just bring that up.
So this image shows the property lines.
Yeah.
And it is actually fairly sizable.
But is that the point five four that's listed here?
It should be.
It should be.
Where that truck is parked visually looks like it's part of the property, but it's not. So that is not included.
Yeah.
So it does look larger than it actually is.
Yeah, where this truck is, is actually Fire District property across here, but it goes to the north.
Yeah.
Quite a ways further than you would think driving by. It goes beyond the driveway.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna argue that half an acre is still.
Very small.
Small for I think what we're looking for.
But it does come with a parking lot.
But it does come with a parking lot, right?
How big is that building?
I'm sorry.
How big is the city hall, Old City Hall building? I'm neat.
Oh.
It's two floors plus a basement, but I think visually I would say each level probably about two thousand square feet.
I think it was a, a shade over that. For some reason, my brain didn't thinking thirty-five to thirty-eight hundred a floor.
Oh, wow. Then that.
But it's not, the current building is not remodeled, no.
We would have.
And I do not want an elevator. I should have put that, my top priority is no elevator.
Single floor.
Every library that I've talked to that has a elevator and having worked in libraries with elevators, no.
No, don't want.
You need twice the staffing and plus the elevator, elevator maintenance.
Oh, that'd come out of budget, yeah.
And just an elevator itself is over a million dollars just for that.
So, okay, just thinking off the top of my head, if you kept the building and took off the top floors.
We'd be in the basement.
Be in the basement.
Which is where we started.
Because actually, in order to get to the so-called first floor, you have to go up steps.
Correct.
And so it's not at street level.
And due to the construction of the building, the jail cells are actually structural to that second floor. So we can't remodel and remove the jail cells. Or the building would fall.
The chain room goes.
That's just a thing. I was, the decor and possibilities are endless.
So we would, if we chose that property, we would have to commit to. Several hundred thousand dollars to tear it down. And then we would have bare ground to start from scratch.
But we don't have to pave a parking lot.
Not this year anyway. So. And what I hearing you say is that a twelve to fifteen thousand square foot, single-story building. Would cover how much of that half of an acre? Does an acre.
Yes, like two, two-thirds.
An acre, you wrote down here, an acre is what, forty-three thousand?
Might actually be able to show that. Give me a minute.
Adam's good at that.
How big, Eva?
Twelve to fifteen thousand.
Okay, give me a minute.
So the building fifteen thousand and the acre is forty-three?
Thirty, forty-three thousand five hundred or eight hundred?
And so fifteen, forty-three minus fifteen?
It's a little over a third of the lot.
Oh, okay, a little over a third, a little over the third of the lot would be building, two-thirds of the lot. Well, not all of that would be available for parking, but.
And one positive of the City Hall property is that we already have. An architectural rendering of what could fit there. Doesn't mean that's what we would have to go for. But that could be a hundred thousand dollar expense that we've already paid for in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. That we could just hit the ground and start fundraising basically as soon as it's approved. Um, so that could move up timeline and could cut a different other cost. But there's, everything is not perfect. But if we want to be in on the discussion with um city councils, since I believe it's one of their goals for this fiscal year. To um do something with that property, we would need to start that discussion as soon as possible.
So it's kind of hard to see, but these white dots outlined. On here.
Yeah, I see them.
That's thirteen thousand square feet.
Okay.
That big, much bigger of a footprint than what's there now.
It extends out clear to the curb here, clear to the curb here. So we would have to set it back, but just for a visual reference. This is a thirteen thousand square foot.
And the architectural rendering basically takes that and I think it could fit in nine or ten parking spaces on that property with the driveway and all of that.
All, I mean, that barely covers the staff, really.
It was, it was labeled as handicap and staff on the drawings.
And then how many are parking places are across the street?
I want to say forty-six.
Yeah, that's, it's between thirty-eight and forty-six depending on.
Your size of your truck.
Yeah.
And just keep in mind too, keeping the needs assessment in mind, the thirteen thousand square foot building is kind of smack dab in the middle. Of what was assessed as the need. So if we go back to the future growth conversation. In twenty years, you will find yourself in that same position that the current location is. If we continue the growth trajectory and we've grown by about six hundred people in five years.
Right, and there's no outdoor space. So there's. If you have a building that maybe isn't quite the size that you wish for, but you have a lot of outdoor space that you could spill out into. Although you could make the argument that it's not that far from Sankey Park.
Right.
And then Sankey Park could be sort of a de facto outdoor space.
And then I will say for visual for those that have visited libraries in the area. The Lebanon Library is um about eight thousand three hundred square feet. The Albany Library, which is in an old bank, is about seventeen thousand square feet.
But that has a second floor.
Yes, but I'm just saying visually for what they can fit in it, if you've been to either of those to help.
Yeah, and I, I personally can't use Lebanon as an example because I've only been in as far as like the circulation desk. So I don't know what else is.
They have a fireplace.
Nice. Yeah, so. So. So let's talk about the other properties that we have not considered, for instance. The fourteen hundred Nandina Street property.
By Safeway. Adam's giving me a face about that one. It's vacant is why it's on the list.
Yeah, that one just has some very major access problems.
Well, and I completely agree, which is why I'm not considering it at all. But I'm just saying there are properties that we earn, you know, if some, if someone should ask, well, what about?
So this property is this area circled.
Right.
The current access crosses the railroad tracks.
Correct.
Franklin Railroad has a deal for one. Single-family dwelling to use that access, but the agreement for building, Eva, you know this from planning.
Right.
Is a road has to be built across here. There is about a twelve to eighteen-foot ditch, so there would need to be a culvert slash bridge. For the access, which is why it hasn't really been built yet.
Yeah.
And why it's so cheap.
The previous owners have said they reached out to Franklin and they were denied any further access. Which is why they abandoned development.
Well, and we know that that's been Franklin's um position on other requests for, for crossings. So. To me, that's a non-starter.
The one on Grape Street, I'm not sure of the elevation of that up by Sankey Park, but it is right by Sankey Park, which is certainly positive.
Yeah, can we see that? I'm having trouble visualizing.
Upper Sankey.
Yeah, what's the address?
It just has a T one.
Is that the area that was um potentially going to be an Upper Skate Park area?
So it's.
This way?
The other way, towards the Boys and Girls Club. So it's off of that corner, that tree is in the corner there.
This area?
Yeah. I just don't know what the elevation is for that, but it has great outdoor access to Sankey.
It does. Um, the one thing to remember here though is you're also in a riparian zone. Because that's where um.
And that's one point three acres.
That Ames Creek flows through there. So you have some additional challenges being in the riparian zone, a protected habitat.
Right.
It is a pretty lot though.
So the access is up of Twelfth Avenue, just north of Elm. And let's see. And that's also one in approximately one and a third acres.
And you have great access to Junior High, High School, Boys and Girls Club, Sankey.
Right.
I don't think the property itself supports something.
And parking.
We could use Sankey too, because it's not, it would.
That's a pretty steep hill though, coming from, from lower to upper.
Oh, I walk it every week. And then um thirteen thirty-seven fourth.
Yeah, where's that?
Not sure. I can't remember where that one is.
That one's on Highway twenty, right?
I'm sorry, I think I transcribed it wrong. That's actually forty-seventh. Okay, that makes more sense.
And it's thirteen thirty-three, not thirteen thirty-seven, but.
I got my, I got my numbers really mixed up, sorry.
That explains why Maps is not playing nicely.
So where is that?
It's uh where the Thai food cart has been.
Oh, it's a Paradise Motor Co. Yeah. I, that's. That's down, yeah, I mean, that's a decent property. Isn't that next near the.
It'd be close.
Forest station or?
Right next door.
Okay.
Near Foster and the rez and. So you are near a school. And it's a school that's been historically forgotten about physically.
And it's an acre, so it's usable and it's accessible and it's accessible.
About how far is that from where we are right now? Like maybe a mile, maybe?
From here to City Hall?
Yes.
Yeah, probably about a mile. Do you know where Radiator Supply House is?
I do. I'm having vis- visual issues with my facial.
This is their driveway to get down there.
Forty, this is off of forty-seventh, so it's only so many more.
Yeah.
So it's like two blocks past Tow Mater.
Okay, 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 thank, sorry, I took a dump, a tow truck.
And it's on Highway twenty, and so it's visible. And there was, and an acre is enough property.
What is the, the building? Is it a real building?
There is, but none, I don't think that, nothing big enough that I think you could.
No, it's listed as vacant, like, um, basically.
Yeah, when I was, I, when I worked at Chamber, I met with Jeff a lot and I just remember it kind of like a big shop looking thing.
Yeah.
So there's a bunch of like temporary type structures back here.
Yeah.
But I don't think there's anything convertible that.
So four hundred thousand dollars for an acre. On Main Street.
That we'd have to build on.
That we'd have to build on.
Correct.
It'd be vacant land, yeah.
But we do have, we're right on, we're right on twenty.
Yeah.
Near school.
Right.
One also remember that commercially zoned property with Highway twenty access. Is probably gonna be higher.
I believe this one has access off of twenty.
It does.
If there's a curb cut or not.
There is, right.
Which that is also makes it worth more.
Yes.
Correct.
Right.
So this one actually has an access off of forty, there's actually two accesses, off of forty seventh and one off of twenty.
Which is very good.
And this is one of the corners that was redone in the ODOT project. There is a hydrant across the street.
So we could spend four hundred thousand dollars to demolish City Hall in the city core. And have half an acre plus something across the street. Or we could spend four hundred thousand dollars on forty seventh Avenue and have an acre. With two accesses. Just trying to put the pluses and minuses in their columns. We get twice as much land, which would address our future con- our concerns for the future. An acre might give us um, an opportunity to build some sort of outdoor space in years ahead.
It's, I like the location. My, okay, I like the location a lot. I like how close it is to City Hall and considering I was enlightened a little while ago that this is technically the center of town.
You're talking about City Hall.
Yeah, but where, no, where we are now. I like the location. Because it's more central to what the town is building up to be, I think.
Building up to be, I see.
And I think being on Highway twenty with a little bit more. Space than downtown is worth pretty high on my list.
I agree.
And one of the variables that we just don't have any control over, that is constantly. A challenge for us is how stretched out the town is on Highway twenty, which is not how it was. Back in nineteen forty seven, when the core was the core and Foster was Foster. And they were two separate towns.
Again, the yellow lines are hard to see, but that's the property boundary. It's point nine six acres.
And what's the property just to the east?
The forestry?
Oh, that's.
No, it's not. The forestry is to the west.
See it on the little screen, give me a minute. That is the Sweet Home Congregation of Jehovah Witnesses.
Yeah, so.
So yeah, the property line goes clear up to here.
Yeah.
And so there is one, two driveways off of forty seventh. And then there's a curb cut right here off of Highway twenty.
Yeah.
Your, your estimate to build an, a new building is how much?
A brand new building is um, what I've seen other um, libraries ask for is fifteen to twenty million.
Say again?
Fifteen to twenty million.
That's what I thought. And it would be the same on this lot or the twenty three acre lot. Yeah. This lot is constrained about future development. Thank you.
Is, it would also be the same amount if we had to tear down old City Hall. And start from scratch there, so.
Almost everything we're looking at would really be a new building, right?
Yeah.
With the exception of the possible pizza place.
Yeah, unless you know any landowners in town that have a building about the size we need. That would be willing to donate or sell to us. Um, so if you know anybody. So there's that too of, we're just looking at what is expected to be for sale in the next several months. Or is currently for sale. We could also just say it's not the time right now. And wait until something else comes up, but I don't know that there is anything else.
I think, I think the time is now to at least make a decision.
And I will throw another monkey wrench into this. This would cau- have more staffing costs. But it is possible, because we are so, such a long town, um, to have multiple branches. At about the size that we are now, to add another building at about six thousand square feet at this, the east end of town. Which would lower construction costs, but it would cost a lot more year to year to operate. Because it would be two buildings, you'd have to basically double staff. And some of the materials would have to be doubled as well. But that is an option.
So that would be a challenge um, in terms of programs. Because we know how constrained the current library building is now.
One of the options, what some libraries do is if they have two buildings, is they concentrate like more kids and teen stuff. Would happen in this building, more of the adult stuff that take place in this building. But then you're also missing out on the adults that are there with their kids wanting stuff as well. But for programming, it could be like, we could turn our current building into more kids focused. And we would have the space to do more programs. Because if we take out all the adult stuff, there's more room.
Right, right.
But it's not as convenient.
Right.
These are all the things that are in my head all the time, so you know what's going on in there.
I'm just thinking from a personnel standpoint, that is a magnitude more complicated. Which I'm not in favor for, but you know, it's all about a balance.
So do we have a direction we would like to pursue more than others?
What was the estimate on possible remodel of a building currently existing?
Um, looking at what other libraries have paid recently, it'd be three to five million for the ten to fifteen thousand square feet.
Yeah, and that is so attractive as compared to fifteen million for a.
But you need a building to remodel.
Right, and a parking lot.
Right.
I did try to trade old, the current library for this building and I was denied.
Yeah, yeah.
This building's still right at the edge of what we would need anyway, but does have parking.
But it has great parking, yeah.
And green space.
Yeah.
Sure, deal can't be made.
Yeah, so the question.
Else put me on the spot.
Do you bite the bullet?
The previous committee manager said no.
Let's go for some vacant land, knowing that it's gonna cost like a bazillion dollars. And how do we get that far?
Well, the one variable that we really won't know until we go to break ground is what. Building materials are gonna cost, whether they're gonna go skyrocket again or go down. And that makes me a little nervous, to be honest.
Yeah, building materials I would expect would be going up.
Yeah, because had we been able to build this in twenty, early twenty twenty. It would have been eight to ten million for a brand new building at the old City Hall location.
So double.
Yes.
Ish.
Yeah, so waiting doesn't sound very wise.
No.
If you remember, the world kind of went crazy in twenty twenty. But the prices have pretty much leveled out since then.
But they haven't.
But they've stayed really high.
Yeah, they haven't gone down.
Uh, but that was then and this is now, and waiting now seems less good than before.
I just, if we do go for a new building and we have a several year planning process, will it double again?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think we can afford to wait a few years to see what happens. I think. It's more prudent to try to fight through what we've got now. So it seems like there are a few properties. The old airport, this one that we just looked at at forty seventh. Maybe, oh no, not that one.
The Paradise Motors.
Okay.
Yeah, the Paradise Motors. Has two potential vacant properties. And then the pizza building, McCool's. Oh, let me just start over again. So vacant potentially could be Old City Hall. Paradise Motors and Airport. And potential buildings that are already in existence could be the pizza place. McCool's. What am I, am I missing another one?
I think that's the only buildings that exist.
Those two.
On the list.
So those are five properties, potential properties. Each inherently holding a different cost. You know, I would like to think that we could make, to, to make the story end in a happy, on a happy note. That we could get the pizza parlor and make friends with the people who own all the parking places behind. But you know, in a real world, that doesn't always.
There's maybe what five or, how many streets, street parking spaces in front of that? Do we think there might be approximately? And obviously not.
Five maybe.
Okay.
It appears there's five right here for the whole stretch and then there's three more on this side.
Okay.
But those three are allocated to this building, which.
Okay.
That's Henry's building.
Yep, that's Henry's building.
And I will say one thing that I do like about being downtown beyond just the library part of it. Is the economic development potential of if a library is right on Main Street. The buildings next to it suddenly become far more valuable because we are bringing foot traffic to the area. A coffee shop would be such far more vi- um, viable there. Um, next door, um, other businesses would have more foot traffic and drive by traffic to bring business to downtown.
So I realized I did this for all the other properties and not for this one. So it starts here, the yellow line. So this building has. It actually ends right there, so it actually has zero parking allocated to that building currently.
Okay.
Other than what's up front, which is.
But yeah, so there's no parking.
None currently, but that can all be negotiated.
Yeah, and we would certainly consider entering into parking lease agreements if the surrounding owners were interested.
And I think again, with the economic development portion of that, that could, would definitely help. So I know not all of the buildings have something open to the public in them right now. But if they did, then you can't really control what people park.
So, so do we care that the potential parking area? For the pizza parlor is adjacent to a bar?
I don't think we would have really the same operating hours. And we're right next to, we're kind of by a bar as it is.
Yeah, we are. Yeah, that's true. Couple of them actually.
That's what's downtown.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, you know, I'm thinking about parents and children and.
We're always gonna be next to a bar and a church.
Okay, well, all right. That's right, there's a church there too. So Jim, what do you think about what we're talking about this pizza parlor location? Right in the middle of the screen.
Is it?
Right there.
That where the video store used to be?
Pizza. It was T and M Pizza.
There's like potential, I believe it's up.
Here, let me give you a little cruise down the street to reference you. So Sugar Vibes Donuts, La Moda. Is Hogan's new building. No, that's Peter Mine. So that's Carla's, that's Peter Miners. And then it is just beyond that, it still has the pizza sign up.
And then across the street.
And across the street is O'Reilly's. And it's this green awning front all the way on down, and I believe there's like three addresses here.
It looks like it takes up about half a block.
And building space wise, is it really big enough?
It is just about double of what we have now, which is at the bare minimum of what would be worth moving. But. But most libraries are, most buildings are built for like a twenty year um, future. And that would work fine for that. And leave the next person to have another issue. But that's how build, that's what buildings are built as anyway. Is most libraries are only built looking forward twenty years. Most public buildings are built that way. So, good enough, but not perfect, but positives and negatives of everything.
Is eleven oh five Main Street part of what you're showing us right now?
Yes.
So that's nine thousand plus eight thousand would be that?
I think total, it's just about eleven thousand total because.
Hang on.
It's weird. That's, at least that's what I, the report I had from the.
Yeah, I think so. Wherever, I don't know where these square footages came from, but wherever these came from, I think they're overestimates. Because we had toured the buildings previously and yeah, it's, it's closer to eleven twenty.
So all three of those addresses would be about eleven thousand.
The pizza place was listed as like seven thousand public space. And then each of the small sections next, buildings next to it, addresses, they're under the same roof. Were about a thousand each. And then there was a storage place for the pizza place behind the two small ones. It's all a big box, but it's split up weird. And that was about two thousand square feet as well. Um, so it's about ten thousand, give or take five hundred square feet, because it wasn't exact. And thorough outdoor space, but that's what we have.
It's a, it, this is a building that wouldn't cost ten to twenty million dollars to do a new build.
And can you imagine that sign up there saying like, public library?
Well, and there's been a lot of conversations in the community about downtown buildings being vacant. And I do feel like fundraising, you could get a lot of good feedback. From the city utilizing these buildings.
Yeah, I think so as well. Um, and it just that potential of. Hey, then, I know next door, maybe they would put something that's open to the public, like, you know. What the kids right now, the teens right now are really want is an arcade, um, and mini golf inside. But something like that, I think, has more of a potential to thrive within a, you know, three, four block area. Anything would have more potential to thrive downtown.
How many parking spaces?
Six. I think it's just the street parking. But we could work with the um, property owners of the parking lot in the back. And a block away, we do have our current parking lot. Which is where staff could easily park. We can walk a block.
So according to Lynn County records. The eleven oh five address is eighty nine hundred square feet. And the one one, or eleven nineteen is. So if somebody's writing this down, you can add them together. It's a thousand and seven. And then the next one to that is. seven hundred and forty eight, and that's the small one you were talking about. And then the area in the back is eighty nine twenty eight.
Not sure where that one is. It shouldn't be that big.
That's. Here, let me show you what I'm seeing. So that is the main portion of this that comes. Stupid thing gets in the way. So it comes from the main T and M, and then it actually runs behind
Yeah.
the little small ones. That one's eighty nine twenty eight. This one is eleven hundred and whatever, eleven oh seven. And then over here is like the little eight hundred square foot.
Just be those three.
So yeah, so it's these three.
So a little over ten.
Yeah, total.
You know, on the one hand, you could argue that it's, it could be affordable. On the other hand, it's like, what are we getting for our money?
Yeah.
Location, location, location.
Yeah.
Reno, Reno, Reno.
And no, no future. We need somebody who wants to give Sweet Home a bunch of money to build a library.
Well, and I think, I think to Megan's point about the economic development, ultimately, if we did select this location or a similar location downtown, I think the hope would be that this would spur some of that economic development. And if the library was seen as the hub to kick that off, then yes, in fifteen to twenty years, I think we would be well positioned to fundraise for a thirty million dollar new library or a larger location with land or something like that. Whereas right now, yeah, we're landlocked. You are basically maxed out where you are. But if, if the library could be seen as that downtown catalyst that the town has been talking about since the early nineties, that does position us for a future elsewhere.
And it could also be that at that point, if we had the support and the money in town, that our operating levy would be increased. And we could do a branch library, you know, closer to Foster. And we would have the support and the funds to be able to do the staffing part of that.
How, how would the economic development, assuming it should follow, impact the parking?
I mean, that's going to be a challenge in Sweet Home forever. You know, it was built a long time ago on a very compact footprint. So short of demolishing commercial building stock, which is not best practice, we're not going to be able to solve the parking issue. But I think the hope is to, maybe we can expand our public transit options with our state and federal funding. Um, and again, like Megan said, maybe at some point an annex that's more activity based. That, that could be accessed differently.
And, you know, we do have forty six ish parking spaces now and still get complaints about parking. Because they own, a lot of people only want to park in the two spots that are right in front of the building. And if there's not a spot there, they're mad about parking. So no matter what we do, where we go, how big we are, how small we are, people are going to complain about parking. And that's been at every library I've ever been at. That's been the problem of basically if I can't park in the building, I'm not happy. But I have seen some cars go into buildings and they probably weren't happy either.
So I'm thinking about our vulnerable populations like mothers and babies with strollers. We would have to have some sort of closer parking, I think, than just what's over across from the old City Hall. And I'm I hear what everybody's saying about the building, the core of town and the attractiveness and location, location. Um, but I also know it's a ton of work to get leases and agreements from neighboring property owners. That's just illegal quagmire.
And that the building's not currently for sale. But it could be something, if that's where we decide we want to focus, we could start talking with some of the other adjacent owners now and seeing if that's even feasible to have chair parking. Before we even purchase. If that's where we want to go. I just need direction. That's what I'm asking for the most.
Also, if the property owner knew that there was municipal interest, that might make it available for sale. I don't know. I guess it sounds like as much as we're talking about how attractive vacant land is in various locations, that the cost is just prohibitive. Realistically speaking. So that brings us to current buildings. So that leaves us with the old pizza parlor or potentially McCool's. And McCool's.
How big was the building in McCool's?
I think it's only a couple thousand square feet.
Okay.
It's just that green roof one that's, I don't think they added the pulp barn into the square footage.
Yeah, that's probably not considered, excuse me, livable space. But Reno, maybe if it's got good bones, it could be upgraded to a livable structure.
Are there tax benefits to a property owner to donate a facility that's currently a tax write off? To, the, the library is not a nonprofit, but a government entity. Is that correct?
We can take any, any donations to us, I believe are a full tax write off. And it would be market value that they could write off, I believe.
I believe so. I'm not a tax expert, so don't quote me, but yes, there would be a benefit.
They could probably write off more than the building is, would potentially sell for. But we would need.
My understanding that some of these empty buildings are being retained as empty as a tax leverage issue. So there might be a benefit to someone. Who owns this building?
It's up, it's in dispute right now.
What?
It's, it's being disputed right now because of taxes. We'll just say that. But if you know any other building owners that may potentially want to sell, please have informal conversations and bring back anything. I don't know if there are. It's just we seem to be going towards the direction that we want to at least do a rebuild, remodel. And that's at least a direction, which is what I need.
Economically, uh, remodel or rebuild would be what we could afford.
Well, and we can't lock in if we're fundraising for two years, we can't lock in building materials or labor costs either.
Right.
I can't get a square footage on the McCool's building, um, because it's deemed an industrial. And so livable size is just zero. So I.
It's a studio apartment. I'm sure it's what the waste system is.
Yeah. I mean, I can tell by the overhead that it's not nothing.
Yeah.
But it, assessors haven't given me a size. My guess is it's probably currently about a thousand square feet. That looks pretty close to a twenty four by thirty six structure, which is eight hundred and sixty four. It might be a little bigger. So I'd say between eight hundred and sixty four and a thousand, just I guess.
There's not much there. There would have to be a lot of new build, even if that could be incorporated. It would be.
We're back up to the fifteen million close?
Yeah, I thi- I think you would definitely have to do some, some significant site demo to make that usable.
But of all the physical sites, that one, I think, is the absolute best of our options. If we're, if we didn't have to worry about budget. Just, it's a great location, but, but, but.
Yeah, but, but, but. But the potential legal drawbacks for the pizza parlor is also a big, a big but to get involved in other people's.
We would wait until all that's settled and it's back on the market. So it's just currently not.
Yeah, but we don't know how long that will take.
Yeah. So it could be something we save in, you know, six months. This is our plan. We can revisit it again at that point. Because most of these properties have been for sale for three to four years of what I've seen. And then McCool's has been on and off the market since I've moved here. Um, I think airports has been similar and they've tried dividing it and not, and so I don't know the development is coming to some of these properties. Paradise Motors would probably be the most likely. I would think of being purchased and developed currently, but I could be wrong as well. That's just my feeling.
Well, and I think with that one, there's an offer on the table to purchase the business with the land.
Yeah, it makes choosing really difficult.
I know for such a physically big town, you'd think there'd be more stuff available. Because we're very, very long.
But our, our commercial enterprises have been focused in one area, not, not diversified much. I kind of hate to kick the can down the road. But I might be willing to kick the can down the road for six months. Six months, we'd be in the same, we'd be having the same meeting and discussion that we're having today, maybe.
And keep in mind, Megan's very aggressive at always looking at sites. So if something comes up, I mean, we're never not looking.
And we can't, we can always, we can always revisit it at any point before then too. Like I'd probably be contacting you the day after something got listed, if it was perfect.
Well, I would like to add, to ask that maybe we don't wait six months, maybe ninety days. Cause right now the market is gonna start increasing. I mean, I've seen homes come up and that's, I know it's not commercial buildings, but I see real estate popping up for sale. So I'm just curious of maybe another ninety days.
I'm okay with kicking the can down the road for ninety days and because really the spring and summer are the peak real estate selling times for the most part. I don't know necessarily commercial, but.
I don't either.
You know, once the weather starts getting wetter, seems like things slow down a little bit.
Will the price come down a little bit when it slows down? I'm not a real estate person, so I'm asking.
It's incredibly hard to tell for commercial.
Okay.
It would take something selling for us to know what prices it would go for.
Yeah.
Like something else in town selling.
Yeah. So is that what we're gonna recommend is to revisit this in, this is July, August, September, October?
If I may, I would say that we are looking towards a remodel. And we will revisit the location of that remodel in ninety days.
I'm okay with that. You okay with that, Jim?
I'm not happy, but sure.
Well, yeah, I'm not happy either.
I'm nodding along.
Well, as an alternative, what would your recommendation be for today?
My recommendation today? Well, I think we should move forward on doing everything we can. And I don't know. I don't know what the staff, I mean, we have options, but what does the staff, staff want to do? And that has an impact on my thinking.
We want to have a new building. We was, mostly I just want direction, because then I can start focusing on where, looking at grants for that, for remodeling. Or, um, because there's some grants that you have to do a small project with them, the foundation before you can do, ask for a big ask. And I can start getting some of those small things now, if that's where we want to go. Um, but if we are looking at something like a brand new build, that's gonna take talking to, um, probably some really big donors. But also looking at potentially doing a bond or a loan or, um, I'm not sure the other words I'm looking for. You know, something that would have to be voted on. So that's another layer there too, is where do we get this money? I just want a direction mostly right now of where I can start looking for the money. And we want, well, we would love to move tomorrow, but no matter what we do, that's not happening.
And how often have we kicked the can down the road?
I do not know fully, but the entire time I've been here.
Yeah.
But I came in twenty twenty ones and the world was crazy.
Yeah, so nothing happened because of COVID. I mean, we were really, we were very forcefully pursuing an architectural firm to, and they did, they did, you know, a complete assessment. And then COVID hit. And so everything just changed.
My biggest worry is in ninety days, we're gonna come back and it's gonna be the same list.
Yes.
And I do like the idea of a rebuild, but if in ninety days the list is the same, is there a vacant land that we could say this is the vacant land piece? That would be, sorry.
Hello?
That the board would already kind of lean towards.
I would for vacant land. I'm not the board, but I would lean towards the McCool place.
Which one's the McCool place?
Next to Safeway.
Okay.
We would have to do a new build on that, so that would be, yeah.
I'd say that's the only thing is if we were to come back in ninety days, it's the same list instead of having a similar meeting. This is a second choice for a new build that would.
Well, I'm hoping in ninety days, we can at least find out if TNT, how, whatever the name of the pizza place is done. If that is even viable, maybe get some conversations going about parking leases or the potential of parking leases. So when we do come back in ninety days, we can definitely say parking now, this now. So that's kind of what, and I don't want to go past ninety days at this point.
Well, and keep in mind, ultimately, this board does not have decision making authority when it comes to real estate transactions. So the best we can do is take your recommendation to counsel, but they may ultimately decide that that's not viable. So, okay.
And I'm just bringing my recommendations to you, then you, then we all take them to counsel and this is the first level.
Jim, do you have any other comments?
Well, the new thing that came out of the day in my mind was, uh, an extension annex, a branch of some kind that was a new thought.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about that at all either, so.
And I see some seems like that's a much more plausible option in the short term. But if y'all want to wait ninety days, I can wait ninety days. I'm just not sure how much longer I'll be around.
Well, and you'll be here in ninety days.
And with the annex, again, keep in mind, double the staffing, double the utilities, et cetera. From my perspective, and I can be accused of being overly pragmatic, but I would want to see the appetite for increasing the levy before I would pursue the real estate for that. And that's just my perspective, because if there's no appetite to increase the levy to support that, then we can have a building, but we're not going to be able to fill it.
And for, um, places to look at that do have multiple branches, Albany has two. They have their big building and then they have a Carnegie Library downtown. Um, Eugene has their big building downtown and then they have two branches. You can look at their funding issues with that right now. But it's something that's far more prevalent in Washington than Oregon, except if you're like Mott Loma County, they have branches everywhere. But it's something to look at space wise and funding wise, and I can get numbers. And I can get numbers from Albany if we want to go there, about how much it costs for their Carnegie Library to operate.
And I understood that they were closing the Carnegie Library or they were closing some of the operations of that downtown library.
They, that's where, when they are, there are budget cuts, that's where they increase and decrease hours. Same with Eugene is having that same issue.
So yes, and but what I understand about funding for Eugene and Albany is they both come out of the general fund. They do not have a levy like we do, which is why we're so well protected in that regard. So, you know, blessings for that.
I think we need to get to our actual meeting.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have to call a meeting.
Well, I just want to wrap this up then and say, I think we're gonna put this on the table for 90 days. And, um, recommend to Megan that, um, we're pretty much in agreement that we want to go in the direction that we can afford, which would be remodeling a building should such a building exist. Okay. Thank you.
Do I understand the same places for the board meeting?
If you could just formally adjourn, then we can open a second.
And so I'll adjourn this work session at 4:29.
And then give me just a minute to get.